I state July 22nd, 2020, please stand for the public. Let's go.
The flag of the United States of America. The republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God. Invisible.
Just broad.
That's just broad.
Broad. Roll call, please.
Okay, Councilman Skorinji is absent. Councilwoman Resnetti? Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strong?
Present.
And President Scanlon?
Present.
So that's six here with one absence, Skorinji.
I know approval of minutes from July 8th, 2020, business meeting and July 13th, 2020 special business meeting. Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous approval of the minutes from the July 8th, 2020 business meeting and July 13th, 2020 special business meeting.
All favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Do you want to review the public hearings, please?
Yes.
So tonight, we have three public hearings. I guess we'll do them one by one.
Sure.
And so the first one is city council will hold a public hearing regarding a proposed amendment to the 2020 bond ordinance for the tennis courts at Rec Park in the amount of $9,692,235, an increase of $700,000 from the original bond ordinance.
Give us a number.
Yes, and residents who would like to call in to participate in the public hearing can call 607-772-7101. That's 772-7101. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, hold on, I'll put you on speaker. Okay, can you please state your name and if you're a city resident?
My name is Michael Foskes, and I am a city resident.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. There are a lot of issues that are going on right now, and I appreciate the fact that we are continuing to move forward, the city council, in these difficult times. I do appreciate that, and I thank them. And I know that we're looking at speaking a lot today in reference to some of the finances, which are in critical status. But I want to bring up something that I first brought up and sent in as a resolution on June 29th. And this is in reference to our police department. The question of defunding police remains an issue in our region.
Michael?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. So this, this particular part of the meeting is actually a public hearing for the bond ordinance involving the tennis courts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vescus, please, Mr. Vescus, please call back up.
Yes, if you, if you'd like, you can call back during the public comments.
I will.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Knew that way where that was going.
Okay. That number again is 772-7101, if you'd like to participate in the public hearing for the tennis courts at Rec Park bond ordinance.
While we're waiting, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, yes.
Thank you. I heard that the, the caller mentioned July 29th, and I, I also saw some information circulating around the internet also with that date, July 29th. But we don't have a meeting then, right? The next meeting that, the next business meeting where we would be voting on those grants for the police department, that's August 5th, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
You mentioned actually June 29th.
June 29th, okay.
You're correct, though, the next business meeting will be August 5th.
Okay, great, thank you.
Want to roll more time, Lee?
Yes. And that number again for the public hearing is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, hold on, I'll put you on speaker. All right, if you can hear us, tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
John Solek, being in New York.
Okay.
Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, now, I would like to see the contract for the USPA grant and what the city is being obligated for. I think that's crucial. And we don't know, the public doesn't have any idea, what the city's obligations are for all this grant money. And it's interesting that the more grant money that comes in, the more borrowing that the city makes. And this sends a very strong message. It doesn't send a message of support for tennis or park improvements. But what it, what the message it's sending tonight is clear, that you people on council are not facing the reality that is smacking you in the face. You are still going for distractions. And at a time like this, to even discuss improvements to tennis courts is absolutely asinine. I don't care who's paying for it, we're paying for it, we always pay for it, there's always unintended consequences. Now, in light of the tremendous arson that was conducted at Rec Park after this so-called peaceful protest, what are you going to do? What improvements are you going to make to protect those tennis courts from vandalism? I noticed that the grants that's coming in can include key systems to secure the tennis court area. How, how are you going to protect this? Let, let us not kid ourselves. We spent $800,000 on the R-Space playground. Now we're spending a like amount on the tennis courts. So I think it behooves you, before you vote on it, to say exactly how you are going to secure these tennis courts from vandalism and keep them in the condition for the USPA demand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that number again for the bonding for the tennis courts at Rec Park public hearing is 772-7101.
Could you guys hear him, Larry?
Yes, I could.
Can you hear him here?
I can hear him.
I have the volume up all the way.
I know you're doing it.
Yeah. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, hold on, I can, I can put you on speaker? Okay, hold on. Okay, please say your name and if you're a city resident.
Good afternoon, my name is Mrs. Chikario, and I'm on the west side of Binghamton. And I was calling in response to the bond initiative for the tennis courts. And I agree with the last caller. Right now, we are in unprecedented times, and the idea of spending $9 million on tennis courts, to me, is not logical. It makes no sense. We have other priorities that are much more important, and I wish you would consider that input when you're looking at making, making a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101. This is for the tennis courts at Rec Park bonding. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Great, first of all, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Tina Cronopulos, and I live on Laurel Avenue in Binghamton. And I also am phoning about the tennis courts. I was really struck by the gigantic amount of money, six mil-, I couldn't believe it, $6 million? I know that we're not supposed to swear, but that seems like a lot of money to be spending on tennis courts in one particular area of Binghamton where residents already benefit from, you know, a relatively well-set-up, you know, neighborhood in the sense that we have sidewalks, there is swimming pools, there is greenery, there is the park itself. When there are other areas in Binghamton that could actually maybe, you know, use a little bit of this money. And of course, I haven't conducted a survey of who plays tennis where and when in this park. What I venture to add, and I of course am making an assumption, and I'm very happy to be corrected by anyone, that tennis tends to be a sport that is usually played by people, again, I'm making assumptions, who are white and who have leisure time and who have money. It's an assumption that I'm making, I mean, I grew up playing tennis, and I'm exactly all of those things. And whenever I play tennis, I hardly ever saw anyone who was not white or who wasn't well off. So I'm just sort of putting that out there. But I would like you to think about spending $6 million in an area where we already have some resources. Of course, I recognize that, what do you call it? What is that called? An area where children play, right? The, the children's play area was burnt down, so that is kind of sad. But I would like to urge you folks to reconsider how you spend that $6 million that you've allocated for the tennis courts and maybe put into other areas in Binghamton where it might make a much bigger difference. Thank you for listening, and good luck with your decision.
Thank you. Okay, that number again for the public hearing is 772-7101.
All right, we'll conclude that portion of the public hearing, and we'll read the second public hearing, please.
Okay, so the next public hearing?
Need a motion to close.
Okay, take a motion to close that public hearing.
Second.
Well.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Who made the motion?
Sophia did.
Then who seconded?
Jill did.
Okay.
You're good?
Yes, we couldn't hear it out here.
That's fine, thank you. All right, leave it the second one, please.
Okay, so our second public hearing tonight is regarding a proposed amendment to the 2016 bond ordinance for the water filtration sludge extraction system to increase the total project cost to $6,100,000, and that we expect grant revenues to offset the cost not to exceed $3 million. And the number to call in for this part of the public hearing is 772-7101. You're here for the public hearing? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please say your name and if you're a city resident.
John Solek, I live in the city of Binghamton. The concern here is, I don't think that you can say with any degree of certitude that you can expect an offset payment because these finances on a higher level are in a state of flux. I would prefer, and you're taking, it's interesting, perhaps it's the fact that you have a lame duck mayor, I don't know, but it's interesting that you're taking on so many projects and bonding like there's no tomorrow at a time when you should be actually scaling down all kinds of operations. I note with interest that the town of Vestal suspended, I think in, in April, all their long-term commitments, all their bonding, because the timing wasn't right. I think essentially if we have a government-imposed shutdown on the private sector to the degree that we have, I think it is unwise and imprudent and very, very risky to say that you expect reimbursement at a time like this. Now, maybe if it was normal times, you could say that, but I think your credibility on this issue, and you have no contract, you don't have, to my knowledge, something that you can start litigation over. I, I think you're going way, way overboard. And again, I think, I have not seen one bit of concern for the future of this city and its taxpayers, not one serious discussion of how we're going to move forward. Yet, yet there's all this new stuff on the agenda. It says, if you don't read the newspaper or watch the television news. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101, and this is for the bonding involving the sludge extraction system. Hi, you're here for the public comment? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Great, hi, first of all, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm becoming quite a regular. So my name is Tina Cronopulos. Again, I live on Laurel Avenue in Binghamton. First of all, I'm not sure it's directly related to the bond ordinance for the water filtration sludge extraction system, but I would like to say, I'm finding it quite difficult to participate in the process. And I would like to think that I am relatively good at researching stuff. A lot of the things are inscrutable for an ordinary member of the public who doesn't have time and leisure to go through all these documents. I also would like to say that obviously I got the number wrong. So the tennis courts is funding that is $9 million, which is even more than $6 million, right? So the $6 million is for the water filtration sludge extraction system, which I think is part of the Binghamton and Johnson City sewage plant, is that correct? No, it's a different thing. Okay, so I wanted to just say I got the number wrong, but still, as the previous caller, I am struck by the huge amount of money that is being spent. Particularly this idea that you can expect grant revenues to offset the costs. I'm involved with another organization in town, and they're always very, very careful about saying we can't expect to get this money back from grants because particularly in the last year or so, some of that money hasn't actually come through. When in fact, they, they were pretty certain that it would. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101. And this is for the sludge extraction system bonding public hearing. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, I am. My name is Mrs. George, and I'm calling because I agree with both of the last two callers. We are in unprecedented times, and the amount of money that's being considered to be spent, these are all coming out of our pockets, one way or another, whether via grants or not, it's still taxpayer dollars. We are in dire straits now economically, and unless this is a very serious situation, I think it's something that can be put off until another day. Appreciate you considering those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101 for the bonding involving the sludge extraction system.
Angela, did you say something? You were muted.
Sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Okay, can you do a second?
Second.
Okay, the, the portion of the public hearing is closed. Do you read the next one, please?
Yes.
Can we do a voice vote on that, please?
Sorry, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so our last public hearing tonight is a public hearing regarding a proposed bond ordinance for design of a new fire station in an amount not to exceed $800,000. And the number to call in for that is again 772-7101. Hi, you're here for the public hearing? All right, I'll put you through. All right, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, I'm a city resident. My name is John Solek. And I find it ironic that the location of this fire station is a stone's throw away from the old central fire station that we used to have on Carroll Street. A perfectly great building, it's in use today. And we all moved that fire station in the early 70s to the governmental triplex. Now we're going back to the same area. I don't think, and it's almost a get-rich-quick scheme. I noticed that the purchaser of the land, I believe that he bought it actually from the city in a foreclosure, but I know what it assessed at, it's assessed around $75,000. And to allow this individual to make a huge score on a public project and move the fire station so he can get rich quick is an insult to the taxpayers. So I think it's ironic that you're right back in the same area with a new fire station. I further think it's a, a very ironic situation that this property that went begging in the foreclosure was bought by a speculator, and you're going to enrich this speculator. This all began with urban renewal, and people got rich, people would buy buildings and sell them back to the city during urban renewal. This is just a continuation of the same old nonsense. I would have preferred proposals from other individuals, putting the word out. Where was the RFP that you were looking for a new fire station? Why was this an inside deal? Why wasn't, you know, public input taken? So that's the problem that I see with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for the public hearing on the new fire station. Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. All right, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
My name's Eric Leonard, and yes, I am a city resident. So I actually live on Pine Street, and I am really not in favor of the city putting a fire station there. The location that's been picked seems to make no sense. You're essentially sandwiching an industrial building between two existing housing structures. You know, we already have enough parking issues on this street as it is with the stadium overflow coming into this area, and then with alternate-sized street parking in the winter, it's almost impossible to park here. Additionally, most of the lots on this part of the block have postage-stamped sized backyards, which means that the neighborhood kids are forced to play in the streets, which now they're gonna have to be dodging fire trucks when they're doing that. The documents I've seen for this proposal have a pull-through on Pine Street so that the trucks can pull in through Pine Street and then leave onto court. So it's super awesome to find out that literally the block or the lot across the street from you is gonna become a fire station through the news instead of, you know, the city reaching out and doing any sort of research on this, if the community is okay with this. And additionally, you know, we're putting this right between two buildings when at the end of the block, there is already a similarly sized lot for sale with no property on it that is already zoned commercial. And I have no problem with the city putting in public infrastructure, it's awesome, but this doesn't seem like something that benefits the community in this area. If you wanted to put a parking lot in, that's awesome. You wanna put a park in for kids? Dope, love it, great. But sandwiching like a diesel-reeking building that's just kind of like sandwiched between a bunch of houses, it's not really gonna be the best idea. So, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101, and this is for the proposed bond ordinance for the new fire station.
I'll take a motion to close that public hearing.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Do you want to set the public hearing, please?
Yes. So now we will, we'll set another public hearing. City council will hold a public hearing regarding RL 20-123, a local law amending Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Binghamton to include Article III, consumption of alcohol beverages by minors on private property, also known as the social host ordinance. The public hearing will be held at the next regular city council business meeting, held on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the second-floor atrium located in City Hall. Residents wishing to submit comment for public hearings may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to the meeting to clerk@citybington.com or via telephone during the meeting. For any questions, please contact the clerk's office.
Hey, now on to public comment. You have five minutes. The phone number to call in is 772-7101. Five minutes, public comment, please be respectful.
Hi, you're here for public comment? All right, I'll put you through. Okay, please say your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, my name is Michael Foskes. I am a resident in Hong Kong. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. But I'm sorry for the confusion earlier, but the reason for why I'm calling today is we are in serious financial straits at this time. Today, the comments from the public have identified, even recently, more recently, the comments from our county executive. We know from the New York Association of County Executives, there's a projection for May, it means 31 million in the grant funding. It means 31 million dollars in the grant funding to this county, and then, of course, means the city as well. At the same time, there are a lot of emotional reactions right now in reference to our police department and defunding the police. And what I'm calling, what I'm speaking about today is making sure that we're not going to have hasty decisions and to give us enough time to consider what I'm about to propose and the impact that it has on our community. Because we need to learn from locations like Seattle, Portland, and New York City when it comes to considering defunding the police, which always means to some extent a partial disbanding of the police. And this is too serious to just brush aside, and with the concerns of finances at this time, it's too serious to make a hasty decision on. And I am fearful of that possibly happening. Now, on June 29th, I initially put in a request for legislation titled "The Awareness and Understanding of Police Act." I've been informed since that this may not be something that can be enforced. But what that is saying is it is requesting that every member of City Council must have a ride-along with the police to better understand what is it that they actually do and the impact that they have on communities. We've heard from many people who have been very insistent to put out a portrayal of our police that I believe is inaccurate and takes away from the services that they provide to everyone in our city, regardless of color, gender, income, or any other reasoning. We need to be very steadfast, not emotional, and understanding the impact of this and to understand that this is a cost we need to bear. Because the alternative is too devastating. And we have seen that in city after city after city. I believe that the ride-along is essential, and if it cannot be something that can be mandated, it is something that we should hear, and I would recommend every member of City Council to not only do but to publicly comment on afterwards so that they can reflect on the impact. This is, oh, I'm sorry, this is a moment, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is essential. This is critical. And this is something that we cannot reverse once it's done. If we are to defund our police, or in other words, disband our police to some extent, whether it's because of the emotional impetus put out by certain organizations with a political agenda, or whether it's because of the current financial crisis that we are trying to deal with, the response, the reaction, the result remains the exact same thing. A devastation that will further harm and further impact negatively our economy and our city and our communities. And I think it's a serious issue that needs time to be discussed and needs to be openly debated. And I hope that we can get consensus from all the members to take this action prior to trying to do anything that may financially impact our police and therefore financially and socially impact everyone in this city. I just wanted to take a moment to say that because of everything that's going on today. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to have these comments. Apologize for the confusion earlier on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again for public comment tonight is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your name and if you're a city resident.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Hinak Kornopoulos. I live on Laurel Avenue, and I would like to make a public comment. And just tagging on to what the previous caller said, I don't know, I am an optimist at heart, but I don't think Binghamton is gonna be disbanding its police anytime soon. Although, you know, I'd like you to consider doing that. In any case, I wanted to start off by highlighting the Binghamton interface blurring statements against racism. If folks have read that.
Can you speak up, please? Can you speak closer to your microphone? We can't hear you. A little bit better?
Okay, I'm gonna try and speak as loudly as possible. I don't know.
That's better.
Okay. So just quickly to highlight the Binghamton interface blurring statement against racism. If you have read that, I urge you to do so. One of the goals that they include in their statement is working with reviewing police departments' dues of first continuum, you know, knee holes, chokeholds should span. Another thing they say they will work towards is to help review disciplinary records of police officers to determine if and how police officers' conduct is shielded from public use. I was struck by this because, at least from my perspective, as someone who lives in the city, someone without a law degree or a background in journalism or government, it is extremely difficult to obtain this information. As I mentioned in my comment from earlier, I am frustrated at how difficult it is in general to participate in local government operations. I wish council members would do a better job of encouraging their constituents to participate in council meetings and educate them on how to become part of the process of helping our community thrive. Some of you are doing this, awesome. Some of you are not doing this. Not so awesome. In any case, I was quite struck by what the mayor said this past Monday after receiving almost $500,000 in grant money for the Binghamton Police Department. The mayor said, "In addition to investing in our police manpower, we should also be investing in things like social workers, medical personnel, mental health professionals." To me, this feels a bit like a mockery. Why do I say this? As far as I'm aware, and please correct me if I am wrong, no one is applying for or has received, at least as part of the city, grants worth $500,000 or more for exactly these things. Instead, what seems to be happening is a sort of behind-the-scenes money-gathering exercise that keeps funneling money to the police department when we have much greater needs in other areas. You may, or you may not know that, with the help of Fred Akshar, who is a part-time police officer in Fort Dickinson, the city applied for a grant in order to purchase an armored vehicle for the police department last year. Why does Binghamton need an armored vehicle? We do not live in a war zone, and I can't think of any reason why we cannot call in the National Guard to intervene should it ever become necessary. Of course, I haven't conducted a survey of opinions folk told on City Council, but if your approach is the bad apples approach, wouldn't you want to know who the bad apples are who work at the Binghamton Police Department? Maybe there are none. Maybe there are some. Do any of you on the council know who the bad apples are? Have any of you tried to find out this information? Governor Cuomo recently repealed Section 50A of civil rights law, which shields the police's disciplinary records from public use, making it possible for members of the public to file requests under the Freedom of Information Act for disciplinary records of police officers. And yet, it is proving quite difficult to obtain these records. Did you know that the police department in Utica announced it would make personnel records available to the public by posting them online? If Utica can do it, why can't Binghamton not do it? As far as I'm aware, police salaries and benefits are being paid for by residents, AKA taxpayers. So, as a taxpayer...
Ma'am, we have about 30 seconds left.
...you kind of claim on seeing the background of any public employee, wouldn't you say? I would like to urge members of the City Council to ask the mayor and the chief of police this. The department will work towards posting currently police personnel files online. Will the chief and deputy chief post their personnel files online? And if the police officer plans to post current police personnel files online, how will the department comply with request for access to those records? Just to say, I'm a white, middle-aged woman, and my interactions with the police in Binghamton have not been great. I have been disrespected in a way that I cannot imagine being done to somebody who is white. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that number again for public comment tonight is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. All right, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, my name is John Solek. I'm a resident of the city. Micromanaging the police department. Let's take it one step further. Why not micromanage the fire department? People die in fires all the time. Sometimes firemen save lives. Sometimes they can't get to the people in time. Are they ever accused of being irresponsible or causing people's demise? We have protests in the streets about firefighters. Perhaps we should micromanage the sanitation department. Here's what I think is going on, and, you know, you could make a lot of money. If you want to turn the streets into billboards, you could make a lot of money. And I think that you have costs, you know. These street markings are going to attract people. And in John Lindsay's case, when he was mayor of New York City many years ago, he had declared graffiti art, and guess what happened? You had more and more marked-up subway cars. So I think that this is atrocious. I'm the gentleman that wanted to rename the street after a president. That wasn't considered, but yet somehow now this is considered. And this is supposedly an artist. Black Lives Matter is a Marxist organization. It's an anti-Catholic organization. We had four churches attacked in two days all over this country. I don't support Marxism. I don't know people that do support Marxism. But you can't confuse racial justice with Marxism. The next thing is, there's no problems in Binghamton. Why are we addressing the problems of Minneapolis? It's not our call. It's, why are we addressing problems in other areas? Why is the City Council putting forth a resolution that essentially declares these police officers in an untried case guilty? Guilty. The evidence hasn't been presented. Yeah, God, it's horrible. I think it's horrible. It's uncalled for. Everybody does. But I don't think that you should adjudicate cases. It reminds me of when Nixon was on a news conference one night before Manson was brought to trial, he declared Manson guilty. I don't think you should step into that. This is, this is not the city of Binghamton's business. And any more than, you know, Nicole Brown Simpson's death would be city business and the Bronco chase. So I think you ought to find better ways to occupy your time, and as suggested before, the best way to occupy your time is facing down what you have to face down. This is, these people that are associated with this group locally, they have attacked me not once, but twice, and I'm talking about physical attacks. I was attacked at the county legislature, and I was attacked at recreation parks. So they are not peaceful. They are violent. And I am a senior citizen who was attacked by these people, and I resent them. And I will stick up for myself. I'll stick up for my country, and I'll stick up for the police department. And I think you should be ashamed of yourself, and I would like to know where you see this as far as the city charter. You know, when you have your duties and you take your oath of office, you're supposed to be following the city charter and code and really non-binding resolutions that don't relate to any trouble of the city. And by the way, I was the first one to go on record to object to the military equipment of the police department. Many, many people are slandering me, including this Black Lives Matter group. And they're, they don't know my record over 40 years, but yet they feel compelled to brigade and to do all these internet tactics, slandering good residents who have done more for this city than they've ever done. So I resent it. I think it's a problem. I don't, I think it's gonna cost you money, and I don't think you're going to recover the cost. And I think that by having it for 30 days...
You have about 30 seconds left.
...people's free speech. Or, you know, 12 months, 12 people can only have free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the number again is 772-7101, if you'd like to call in for public comment. Are you here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
My name is Heather Molanda, and I am a city resident.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Sorry?
You have five minutes.
My complaint, I was hoping that some sort of a resolution for signs in the city that have to do with limited signs that can no longer be seen because of the foliage covering them.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Can you speak up a little bit? We're having trouble hearing you.
I know. I'm on the web server. So do I cancel that, or?
Yeah, speakerphone. I'm not sure. Can you just speak loudly and clearly into the microphone?
Sure. So my concern is the foliage, the signs, and people not upending the signs to be seen there. Um, you know, the DPW...
Oh, the foliage, you say? Okay.
The foliage is covering the speed limit signs on the west side, I think she said.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So that's my concern. I know the DPW has the warning, but I can address this and talk with the district division and the county attorney. So, that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
Lee, I think some of the council members had some difficulty hearing her. Is there any way we can get a callback number from her? Because it appears that it's a maintenance issue.
Ma'am, if you're still there, can you tell us your number? 36824...
18.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that number again for public comment is 772-7101. Are you here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, Deborah Hogan, city resident. Good evening, council president, council members. It's an honor to be before you. Very different. I'm used to seeing you in council chambers. Have many topics to try to touch base on, but I think what prompted the coming forth was just concern, disappointment in the work session and discussions that we had on Monday. And would like to compliment President Scanlon for trying to assist all of the council members in trying to get their thoughts out, especially with the resolution. I'm always concerned when we have the non-binding resolutions. We are not Philly. We are not other communities. We are the city of Binghamton, the parlor city who has a grand tradition. Can we improve? Always. But when you look around, not this summer, but almost every weekend from May through October, whether it be various ethnic organizations, fraternal orders, various religious institutions, we are celebrating diversity, sharing in food... we are celebrating diversity, sharing in food, culture, music. It brings this community together. We have a proud tradition with the American Civic Association that helps with that diversity. And when we were adding names, it really bothered me. This worldwide phenomenon that is bringing people's attention was in relation to Mr. George Floyd. I think all of us, when we saw that video, were sickened, disheartened, that this was happening. But when it comes back to my community, and the men and women of our law enforcement, who put their lives on the line every single day, and aside from the military, I'm not sure of any other profession, when they leave their loved ones, that they may not come back home. There needs to be a respect for all in the arena. And I think many times when we use adjectives to describe events, or maybe even movements, those adjectives can innately divide us and not bring us together, which is what we were hoping. The only bright spot that I saw in that resolution for me was the celebration of Congressman, um, Lewis and his recent passing. It's very difficult, and when you have something this important, that when other people are listening to us this evening, or even the discussion Monday, or that this is now gonna be potentially part of our history of this community, is that what we wanna say about the city of Binghamton? I had the honor and distinction of doing research with the Department of Justice to help bring almost a million dollar grant into the city of Binghamton, called the Weed and Seed Initiative for Center City. No, it was not a four-H project. It was where we worked with law enforcement, our community-based organizations, City Hall, our public, um, higher, uh, institutions, community policing, and social seating to make a difference. We had police officers come to St. Mary's Gym to speak with the young people, from the Y, the Urban League, the Boys and Girls Club. We need to get back to funding, and have made a suggestion for CDBG funds to be utilized to bring back the Citizens Police Academy, and also the Youth Academy. You have an opportunity to have a ride along with an officer. And until you sat next to that officer and see how they run from call to call, or you have been in a neighborhood that was overrun by drugs and prostitution, you had your dog poisoned. Your livelihood jeopardized and your life threatened.
You have about thirty seconds.
Those are the men and women that made it different, and I don't wanna broad-brush against that. We also need to support our parks. We have yet another event this Saturday, but it's not sponsored. We need to help educate our young people who have the enthusiasm, how to go about getting permits and sponsorship to make it a safe event for everyone. Thank you for the opportunity this evening, and the discussion only begins. I hope this is not final. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, the number again is seven seven two seven one zero one. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, my name is Tarka Bellisam, and I am a Binghamton resident of the south side. I'm calling a couple things. One is regarding the upcoming tax foreclosure auction. Many of you know, I am not a big fan of the tax foreclosure auction. Um, it leads to unpredictable outcomes, and often it finds, uh, our neighborhoods wrecked and ravaged by slum lords and other area speculators and investors. But if you just look at the process, first, it's inequitable, in that the process really eliminates anyone who needs traditional mortgage financing. It's a cash business, you have to put ten percent down and then close with a final price in thirty days. So again, it's inequitable, it's inefficient, it's ineffective. Um, there are communities all across New York, all across the country, that are utilizing land banks, we have one here in Brim County, to get predictable outcomes and ensure that every tax foreclosure property turns out to be an asset to a neighborhood and not a future liability. I'm saying this as somebody who has lived next to a vacant property for years, it was a bank foreclosure. Unless you have that experience, you really have no idea of how annoying and traumatic, um, that can be. If any one of these properties that were being auctioned were immediately adjacent to any one of the seven council members, or the county executive, or the mayor, I can guarantee you one hundred and ten percent, you would not want that auctioned, and I'm sure it wouldn't be auctioned. So I actually canvassed around a couple properties, sixty-two Howard on the east side, and forty-five Bying Street on the south side. I heard from neighbors, particularly on the south side, for example, a family that's been there forty years, multiple generations, that wants to buy the property, has been trying to reach out to the city and the county with no response, should be willing to invest in the property, bring it up to code, and rent out to family members. Those are exactly the kind of folks we want, taking over these nuisance properties and strengthening our neighborhoods. You cannot do that through the auction, but you can do that working in partnership with a land bank. So I encourage all the council members to talk to the county executive. If you have, uh, properties that are slated for auction next Thursday in your district, I would encourage you to do the responsible thing and ask them to pull those from the auction, and work with the land bank, of which I'm a board member, but I'm speaking myself as a resident, so we can get better outcomes for our neighborhoods. The second thing, very quick, I think y'all are approving bonding authority in this week or this month more than the city approved last year during the budget process. You're starting a fire project that's over eight, uh, over eight million, when you include design, another million for water project, millions of dollars being bonded, honestly, this month, more than the entire budget last year. I would really like if the city could put forward a summary of its constitutional, um, borrowing authority, because I know that when I served with the last administration, we were constantly around eighty percent, and it just seems like by adding millions and millions, almost surreptitiously after the budget process, that we really have no idea as to the burden we're leaving future taxpayers. So if there's any way that that information can be provided and made public, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for the time, have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, that number again is seven seven two seven one zero one. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, my name is Carolyn Chigario, and I'm a city resident for many years in Binghamton. Uh, dear, uh, council members, it's come to my attention that an artist, artist has recently requested permission by the city council to paint Black Lives Matter on a public space, and that this request has been passed along to the permit department for completion of approval. Um, and as a city, uh, resident, I was dumbfounded to hear that the city council would even consider such a request. Black Lives Matter is a communist Marxist organization that has literally nothing to do with helping black lives. Its New York chairman, Hawk Newsom, stated on National Youth News three weeks ago, and he stated, and I quote, "That if the country doesn't give us what we want, we will burn it all down." That is a declaration of war against the United States of America. BLM founders, Alicia Garza, Opal Tometti, and Patrice Cullors are trained Marxists, as Patrice herself admitted on television in an interview in two thousand and fifteen. Their website clearly outlines their true goals. It reads like the Communist Manifesto. Black Lives Matters cares nothing for blacks. They have rioted, looted, burned down, and killed many people over the last few weeks, such as seven-year-old Natalia Wallace, a little black girl who was shot in the head while visiting her grandma in Chicago. Devin McNeil, eleven-year-old little black boy, shot in the DC area while celebrating the Fourth of July. And then there's the eight-year-old little, Sekulia Turner, she was shot by BLM members in Atlanta while riding in the car with her mom. Two black youths were shot and killed in the Chad Chop area of Seattle by BLM and Antifa fascist. BLM has burned down Minneapolis. It is destroying New York City at this very moment. It has looted and rioted throughout the nation. Its stated goal is to defund the police, whose only proponent, excuse me, its, its stated goal is to defund the police, whose only proponents are criminals and those with a double-digit IQ. It will only further destroy the poor black communities in which violent crimes are most prevalent. If they cared at all for blacks, they would call out the two problems the blacks face, such as the horrific educational system they're receiving in the Democrat-run cities. Did you know that almost seventy-five percent of black boys who graduate from high school in Los Angeles are functionally illiterate? That thirteen out of thirty-nine high schools in Baltimore do not have a single student that can pass a basic comprehensive math test? The hopes and dreams of these young people have been stolen from them. Can you imagine being a young adult who cannot fill out a job application? Or even understand the signs in a grocery store? Yet not a world, word from BLM about this problem. Not a word about the Democrats blocking the Republicans from offering school choice to the inner-city black youths who desperately need and deserve a decent education. Black Lives Matters say nothing about the fact that seventy-five percent of black homes have children with no fathers, that fifty percent of all black babies in the city are murdered by abortion. BLM states that black men are targeted and they are incarcerated at higher rates than whites. They call it systemic racism, yet they refuse to address the real problem of black communities. Did you know that in two thousand and nineteen, fifty percent of all murders in the United, in the United States are committed by six percent of the population? That six percent is black men. That according to the United States Department of Statistics and Prisons, in two thousand and nineteen, blacks committed thirty times as many violent crimes against whites as whites against blacks. Thirty times. They complain that cops are killing blacks, yet in two thousand and nineteen, only two un-embossed were illegally killed by the police. That's two out of the three hundred seventy-five million interactions with the police department, according to the two thousand and nineteen statistics. The issue of George Floyd was hijacked by BLM. Nobody ever asked why George Floyd died. They call it a racism by cops, but was it really? There was zero evidence presented that the cop was racist. What we did learn was that this cop had an extensive history of violence.
Ma'am, you have thirty seconds left.
Of extensive violence in his record. He should have been fired long ago, why wasn't he? The police unions are the real problem in the police department. They make it so difficult that it's almost possible to fire black cops. Yet BLM never once discussed that, because this doesn't help their communist cause. Again, they are caring nothing about blacks. If they did, they would have gone to the unions that protect these bad cops. Our police are the, are not the problem, they are our heroes. What BLM is doing in America today is exactly what the Nazis did in nineteen thirty-three Germany. The Nazis used intimidation, harassment, threats, and violence to make the German people too afraid to stand up to them, what they were doing to the Jews. They cowed down and went along with everything. They were slowly being conditioned to accept the horse, the Nazi regime, a little at a time. Today, we are seeing the exact same tactics, bullying, terrorizing, threatening...
Lee, please.
Thank you. Okay. So that number again to call in for public comment is seven seven two seven one zero one.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Sophia Second, all right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to vote? Okay. Hey, that's a not preferred agenda. Interdict ordinance twenty-six-three, considered finance, councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask council to, uh, for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-six-three, an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty capital fund budget to close bond lines that are no longer active.
Question, comments on this?
Was that a second?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, question or comments on this?
Call for questions, Mr. President.
Question or calls?
Okay. Uh, Councilman Scringy is absent. Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scringy.
Interdict ordinance twenty-six-four, considered finance, councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for, uh, council's unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-six-four, an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty capital fund budget to close serial bond revenue line for grant funds received and increase federal and state aid for transportation projects for grant funds used to pay down banned bonds.
Second.
Question or comments on this? All the questions. Question or calls?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scringy.
Interdict ordinance twenty-six-five, considered finance, councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for council's unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-six-five, an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty fire department budget.
Second.
Question or comments on this?
All questions?
Question or call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Scringy.
Interdict ordinance twenty-six-six, considered finance, councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for council's unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-six-six, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty general fund budget for the purchase of two thirty-five Court Street for a new fire station.
Somebody second this?
Second.
Question or comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I was, um, doing research into why this particular parcel was chosen, and I understand there, there are a lot of good reasons why. Uh, however, I have spoken to multiple constituents who live in this area who are very unhappy about this decision, so I have to vote in order to represent, um, you know, I always say, like, if my constituents were in this seat, what, how would they vote? And my vote should reflect that. Thanks.
Other question or comments? Question or call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Nay.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
So that's four ayes, uh, two nays, Riley and Friedman, and one absence, Scringy.
Interdict ordinance twenty-six-seven, considered finance, councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask councils to, for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-six-seven, an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty Department of Public, Public Works budget to defund a heavy equipment operator position and to fund a heavy equipment operator and trainer position.
Second.
Question or comments on this? Lee? All the questions?
Yes. Uh, Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Skringi.
Interdict Order 20-68, Considered Finance, Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is introductory ordinance 20-68, and this introductory ordinance also has seeker provisions attached to it.
Mr. President, if I could just say something?
Sure.
Sorry, and just because I don't know the procedural piece, I would like to make a motion to hold this over, so I don't know if Councilman Strong should continue reading that or not.
Sure, you're fine. You can do it at any point here, yes. So Councilwoman Resnetti is requesting to hold this over. I need a second.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right. Let's hold over. We're going to talk about a special meeting. Lee, why don't you see if everybody's available on Friday at seven o'clock, please?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
I think, sorry, I'm checking my schedule now. I think that I'm happy to meet at that time, but I am wondering why a special meeting is necessary, why we wouldn't just do this at the next business meeting.
I believe time is of the essence. That's why I requested a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll go around the room and ask everyone about Friday at 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Resnetti, are you available then?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilwoman Riley?
Um, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Friedman?
I'm available Friday evening, but not at seven o'clock. Could we potentially do 6:30 instead? Or any other time? I attend religious services which start at seven o'clock on Fridays.
See, I can't make it till seven, so we're going to have to stick to seven.
Okay. I am, I suppose that I can make myself available at that time.
One more question, though. So why is time of the essence? Can you explain? Are we trying to meet a deadline?
Well, I think to move this project forward, I think we should do, why not have a special meeting on this? That's my answer.
Wait, I couldn't hear you, Tom.
I said, why? That's my answer. Why, if time's, I believe time is of the essence, so why not have a special meeting on Friday, and we can move forward with this if it passes?
I just don't want to ask the councilperson to forego their religious traditions and customs for a vote that is not critical.
Is Friday a holiday?
So for every, this is Sharon Sorkin. Every Friday is Shabbos, and so she's talking about Friday night services, and typically I also attend Friday night services, so I think that's why she's making the request. But to answer the time of the essence conversation, this has to do with the design of a new fire station. I believe, as every council member is aware, the floor of the fire station is collapsing, and the trucks need to be moved out of it in order for the floor not to collapse onto the basement itself. So time is of the essence, really has to do with security, safety, and infrastructure planning, and I agree as your legal counsel with the president's assertion on this point. I would encourage council members to try and find a time on Friday that can accommodate the sundown Shabbos service.
All right, let's, Lee, finish up with the room, and we'll see who's available. Let's get done, because I'd like everybody to be available, but if you can't be, I understand it completely, so we'll finish with the room to see who's available, please.
Okay. Burns?
I probably won't be.
Okay. Councilman Strong?
I could be available then, yes.
Okay. And President Scanlon?
I'll be available, yes.
Yes.
So that's five out of seven of us. Like I said, I'd like everybody to be here, but since time is of the essence, we'll keep the meeting at seven o'clock on Friday.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question just about the timeline?
Sure.
Um, thank you. I absolutely agree that, you know, of course, I don't want City Hall to collapse. That would be a tragedy, but this piece of legislation, the bond ordinance, I don't believe that this would have any effect on the fire department moving to the temporary location. Is that correct? This is a bond ordinance, if I'm understanding correctly, to design the new, the new fire station, which would theoretically be at 235 Court, but in the meantime, the fire depart, like, us approving this wouldn't affect them moving to the temporary location. Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
This is for the design of the new fire station. However, the sooner we design it, essentially the sooner that is done, the sooner we can move. We're literally costing taxpayers money every time we're not in that station, so we've got to get the project moving along, and that's why I said I agree with the president's assertion. Ultimately, the president can choose to set a special meeting on that ground, and he's well within the bounds of his authority, which is the point I was making.
All right, so we'll keep them.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Sure, good question, though.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so we'll keep the meeting for seven o'clock on Friday, so Interdict Order 20-68 is held over. Interdict Order 20-69, Considered Finance, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Introductory ordinance 20-69 also requires a seeker motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could say something, I would also like to hold this over, please. Make a motion.
I need a second on that, if it's going to be held over?
Second.
I'll second that, too.
All right, so we will have, this will be considered during this special meeting on Friday at seven o'clock also. Interdict Order 20-69 is held over. Interdict Order 20-70, Considered Finance, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Introductory ordinance 20-70 also has two seeker motions. I'd like to make those motions separately, and then we'll get back to the actual legislation. Okay?
Sure.
Okay. So we have two motions under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. First motion is to declare city council's lead agency under seeker.
Put it in a second.
Yes.
Sophia Second, is that?
Yes.
Oh, then we need a voice vote, so all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Phil, go ahead.
Okay. Second motion under seeker is motion to identify the proposed action as type two. And I will read that motion. On February 17, 2016, the city of Binghamton City Council authorized and completed seeker for a variety of capital projects, including a proposed sludge extraction system at the city of Binghamton Water Facility. This bond is to amend the financing of the project to include grant funding and does not increase the total bond. City of Binghamton City Council has determined that the proposed action describing above is a type-two action based on Section 617.5 Type II C1, maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in an existing structure or facility. Two, replacement of rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site, including upgrading buildings to meet building or fire codes, unless such action needs or exceeds any of the thresholds in Section 617.4 of this part and 21, minor temporary uses of land having negligible or no permanent impact on the environment and no further environmental review is necessary.
Any motion on this?
That's the motion.
Okay, it's the motion.
And a second.
Need a second?
Second.
Need a second, Ed?
Yes.
So we need a roll call vote, please?
Correct. Okay. So it's a roll call vote on the proposed seeker motion to declare it type-two. Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
You just need a, you just need a roll call on type-two, Lee. You need a roll, I mean, you need a voice vote on the type. You need a roll call on the neg deck.
So we need a voice vote here?
Yeah, so it's a voice vote on the type of action it is, just like lead agency. When it comes to actually declaring that it has a negative or essentially a non-negative impact, that's when you'll need a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, Phil, go ahead.
Now the actual introductory ordinance, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you, city clerk and Mr. President. I ask Council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-70. A bond ordinance of the city of Binghamton, New York, adopted July 22, 2020, determining that the new estimated maximum cost of the installation of water filtration sludge extraction system, the project, here to fore-authorized pursuant to the bond ordinance duly adopted by the council of the city on February 17, 2016. The 2016 bond ordinance is $6,100,000. Further determining the grant funds in the amount of not to exceed $3 million from the state of New York have been or expected to be received on account of said project and shall be applied to pay a portion of the cost of the project or to redeem bond anticipation notes issued therefore. And further determining that the new plan of financing includes the expenditure of said grant funds of the city to pay a portion of the cost of the project or to redeem bond anticipation notes issued therefore. The issuance of bonds of the city in the principal amount of not to exceed $5,100,000 to finance a part of said costs in the levy and collection of taxes upon all the taxable real property in the city to pay the principal of said bonds and the interest thereon as the same shall become due and payable.
Second?
Second.
Council members, this is Sharon. I am sorry to interrupt, and it's potentially my audio cut out, and so I apologize, but I didn't hear a motion for a negative declaration. I only heard the motion for a type-two. Was there a motion for a negative declaration under seeker?
What's that? So I'll take a motion for a declaration under seeker?
Motion. Motion. Second.
Okay. Sure, are we good now?
And then you'll need a roll call vote on that, and Phil, in summary, can you say what the basis is, or can someone tell me what the basis for the neg deck, what negative declaration was on the record?
I, I don't have that wording. My packet ends at the type-two, and then it explains type-two action. Does anybody have that? Could read that?
Okay, just give me one second, okay? I just want to make sure that council is on the same page. Okay, so it's, and I think it's just that it was combined in your motion for the type-two declaration, identifying the action as a type-two. You did state the negative declaration in the sense that the minor temporary use of the land had a negligible or no permanent impact. We just didn't break it down as far as the motions are concerned, and I apologize, your audio may have cut out, so I missed you actually saying it, but I do think council has the basis for the neg deck underneath it, and we don't have to prestate that on the record, but you should do a roll call, Lee. And thank you for council's patience. I apologize.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call on that?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilman, Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Skringi.
And since, I was just going to say, and since Phil made the motion for the actual legislation, and Sophia seconded it, you can move on to questions or comments. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and bearing with us through our technical difficulties.
Sure. Any questions on Interdict Order 20-70? Question or comments?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Okay.
Do you call the question?
So, Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Okay. So that's five ayes, one nay, one absent. The nay was Councilwoman Riley, and absent is Skringi.
Interdict Order 20-71, Considered FPA, Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Sorry, this is Councilwoman Friedman. I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know the protocol for this digitally, because I know you can't see me, but I need to use the restroom, so I will be right back. So, so you know, I.
Councilwoman, we're going to move forward, all right?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration for introductory ordinance 20-71, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a portion of 1209 Vessel Ave and a permanent easement with Pritchard Property Development LLC.
Second.
Question or comments on 20-71?
As a reminder, this needs three-fourths votes, so that means six.
Question or call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman, we, maybe we can circle back to her when she gets back. Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
And do you want to wait for?
Yeah, we got to wait.
Okay.
Sure, just that we need six?
That's correct. For sale of real property, for sale of real property from the city to another entity, you need three-fourths vote, which is different than our regular two-thirds vote for some of these bonds, and therefore you need six of seven members of council for a three-fourth vote.
We're waiting for Councilwoman Friedman to come back.
I have returned, thank you. I just wanted to make it known so you knew why I wasn't answering.
Yes. So are you aware of what we're voting on, and do you have a vote ready?
We're going on 20-71, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm ready to vote on this.
Okay, so it's an ordinance authorizing the sale of a portion of 1209 Vessel Ave in easement with Pritchard Property Development LLC. Everyone else has already voted except for you. How do you vote?
Oh, aye.
Okay, perfect. So that's six ayes, one absence, Skringi.
So Interdict Order 20-71 passes. Interdict Order 20-58, Considered Finance, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for Council's unanimous consideration of introductory Resolution 20-58, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with John W. Danforth Company for change, Order Number Three, regarding the Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Suits and Treaties Phase Three Projects.
Second.
Question or comments on this?
Call for question, Mr. President.
Question or call?
Okay. Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, Skringi.
Director Resolution 20-59, Considered Planning, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask Council's unanimous consideration of introductory Resolution 20-59, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with New York State Department of Transportation to maintain repair and energized lighting installed for the Greenway Project, New York State Route 434, SH. S H, uh, number forty-nine eight and nine zero three eight two six.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Call the question, Mr. President?
Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six zero, considering public works and parks, Councilwoman Resnetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration for introductory resolution twenty dash sixty. A resolution authorizing the city of Binghamton to accept the donation of in-kind services from the Bosie Summer Youth Employment for improvement at the city of Binghamton Parks.
Second.
Comments? Call the question. Question for call?
Yes, oh, wait, sorry. May, may I ask a question?
Sure, Councilwoman Friedman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering if we knew, um, if we had any information about what specifically the in-kind services are. Um, sorry, that was the end of my sentence. I made it sound like there was more, but that's the end of my question.
I don't know if anybody's here to answer that question.
Uh, I can say, I can say briefly, Mr. President, and this should have been, I, I think this was presented at, at the, at one of your work sessions, I think about two weeks ago. Um, this has to do with, um, essentially park drainage issues, um, and so it's contract with, or it was money for a contract with Delta Engineers.
No, we're at twenty six zero, sure.
Oh. I don't have any information on that. I apologize, people.
Yeah.
That's okay. The, the reason why I ask is I, I was made aware of some, um, problematic or concerning behavior within one of the summer youth employment programs that is funded, uh, that is funded by Bosie, so I just wanted to, um, clarify if that was possible. All right.
Aviva, please, Councilwoman Friedman, please follow up with your concerns, um, with, I would imagine, um, our Parks Department and also our, um, Outreach and Youth Coordinator Mayor Brackett in the mayor's office, okay?
I, I will do that, thank you. And I, I was recently made aware of this, which is why I hadn't done that in advance, um, but I will absolutely follow up. Thank you.
Contact Megan Brackett tomorrow. She should be able to help you out and at least take some pertinent information.
Other comments on twenty six zero? Call the question.
Call the question.
Question for call?
Okay. Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six one, considered finance, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty six one. A resolution authori- authoring the city of Binghamton to accept a donation from the EWS Foundation to pay Delta Engineers for the engineering work for the Fairview Park project in the amount of nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Question or comments on this?
Call for question, Mr. President?
Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six two, considered public works and parks, Councilwoman Resnetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration for introductory resolution twenty dash sixty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into professional services agreement with play-by-design for designing preconstruction and construction provision for our space recreation park.
Second.
Comments on this?
Call the question.
Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six three, considered rules, Councilman Strong.
Why not? I could do that too. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, asked, uh, counsel for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty six three. A resolution authorizing the Binghamton Rumble Ponies conduct fireworks displays in two thousand twenty.
Second.
Comments?
Call the question.
Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six four, considered FPA, Councilwoman Resnetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration for introductory resolution twenty six four, a resolution authorizing the city of Binghamton to accept the donation from the West Ice Fire District to the Binghamton Fire Department.
Second.
Comments?
Call the question.
Call the question, Mr. President?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six five, considered an FPA, Councilwoman Resnetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration for introductory resolution twenty six five, for having capable acts of racism.
Second.
Comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Did that receive a second? I apologize.
Yes.
Yes.
It did, Angela.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say that I am very excited to pass this with you all. I think we did, we had meaningful conversations, and I think it was a collaborative effort. Uh, and I think this is a really important and timely statement that we come together and make as a city council, so I am very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments? Yes, Councilwoman.
I too am very excited about this, as it definitely highlights, uh, a lot of injustices that have been going on in our country, um, uh, that we have seen, you know, throughout history. I would also like to, to say that this in no way, certainly, I speak for myself, uh, speaks to, uh, uh, any wrongdoing of our police department, and I just wanted to make it out to the record. Again, it's really highlighting what's been going on through our country, um, for a very long time. I'm, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, just, uh, if you give me just a moment, I have a couple of things I'd like to, to say about this. Take a moment, you know, explain my position and, um, concerns on this resolution. Um, the subject matter is very serious. Um, my concern was that that the harshly worded language, um, even though it's very serious, it's, it's appropriate in that sense. But my concern is that that would be viewed as targeting, uh, the Binghamton Police Department. Um, I have checked with the city, and no one in our police department has ever been accused of any act or crime such as this. Um, so this resolution in my, at least from my estimation, is not targeting them. Um, I want to say that I agree with Deborah and Michael from earlier that, um, I did a ride along, uh, last year, and it is very, um, it's very eye-opening. Um, my takeaway was that at a moment's notice, they could get a call on that, uh, intercom system, and everything could change in them, in just a blink of an eye. So I would encourage anyone here that has not done that to do that. Um, I would also like to say that, uh, I do understand why it's mutually exclusive to respect our law enforcement while at the same time, um, not taking very serious what is in this resolution that, uh, about stopping racism in all forms. I don't understand why we can't do both. Um, I think we can. I think the city of Binghamton should become an example of, of respecting our law enforcement. I think our law enforcement wants to be held accountable to high standards, and I think they should be held accountable to high standards. And if those standards are violated, then they should be held accountable to those standards being violated in the harshest way possible. But when those standards, uh, show that they have done a great job, then, uh, we should, we should recognize that, that as well. Um, finally, I'd just like to say that, uh, for these reasons, I will be voting yes. I want to show my solidarity with my colleagues who have, uh, proposed this resolution and to feel how important it is that as a group, we condemn racism in all forms. And, uh, I definitely want Binghamton to be a more welcoming, inclusive, and safe community to all. Thank you.
If you have some other comments?
Yeah.
Councilman Burns?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm very proud to be a part of this, uh, committee passing, the council passing this, uh, Democrats, Republicans working together. And, uh, but I also, uh, when one of the callers first called in, uh, and talked about the police department, and as other members have said, I, I, I don't want our police department to think that this is about them. It's really about what's, it, it, it is only asking them to be, to be held to the standard that, that, that we all want them to be, but uh, when that, when the caller did, I, I wrote down names of of cops, just off the top of my head, people that I grew up with that, where I would see on the street, and I'd be able to say hello to them. And I respect them totally, completely, and I always have. It's Ronnie McCann, Chippy Burke, Bill Yeager, Tweeter O'Day, John Eggleston, Bridget Eggleston, John Eggleston, Bill Curley, Mickey Burnett and his son, Suzie Burnett, Red Heston and his children, D J Lane, D J Lane Senior, Pat Natale, Dan, Danny O'Stannock, Bill Grace, Jerry Grace, Billy Cahill, Bill Collins, Kevin Casey, John Shade. Uh, I don't want any of them to think that I think that they are anyway, uh, racist or, 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 in, in, in any way. But at the same time, I want all our police to be held to these high standards that this resolution is, is giving them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Other comments?
Yes, Council President, this, this is Councilwoman Riley. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I do appreciate the time we had to discuss both online and offline about what this resolution means, not only to us personally, but to our constituents and the city as a whole. And I do often talk about, uh, thoughts or people not being a monolith and bodies not being dumped in buckets, because I truly do believe in not categorizing people based upon a definition. So I, I thank you for that opportunity. I'm glad we did move forward. Um, and I'm glad that we are united to, again, as we highlighted here, promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, and support our fellow residents in rejecting hate in all forms. And that's all it says. So, I mean, it's not all it says, but it says more, but I think that is uh, something to hold on to and share with our constituents in the entire city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Would you call the question, please?
Call the question?
Question for call?
Uh, Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Council, Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six six, considered finance, Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty six six. A resolution authoring the mayor to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with opportunities of broom and shenanigans, Inc., for five forty-two State Street.
Second.
Comments? Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman? I believe that was an aye, right?
Councilwoman, was that an aye?
Yes, sorry, aye.
Okay.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absent, coringy.
introductory resolution twenty six seven, considered finance, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for counsel's unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty six seven. A resolution authori- authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Binghamton Tech LLC for one fifty-five Port Street for a temporary fire station.
Second.
Comments?
Other question?
Question for call?
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Okay. So that's five ayes, one nay Riley, and one absent, coringy.
On a communication with council members, I believe we're starting with Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no comments for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman, you're next. Councilwoman Freeman? Is she muted again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you now, yes. Yeah, she was muted somehow.
Councilwoman, we cannot hear you.
I hear you now, yes, I do, but you keep fading out somehow.
Oh. Is, is this better? Can you now?
I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll keep it short. I just, um, I wanted to say that, I guess just repeating what, what I said about passing the, um, the resolution condemning hateful acts and racism, uh, I was, I was taking into account what a lot of my constituents have said, uh, and this is something that is, I think, really meaningful, and that it doesn't, um, you know, a, a resolution condemning hateful acts and racism is just that. I don't, you know, it doesn't say anything necessarily about, uh, anything else, but just recognizing that, um, you know, racism is a real issue, and that, you know, most of us on this city council probably have not experienced racism directly, but the fact that we can come together and recognize that this, you know, we, we do represent black residents of Binghamton and people of color, uh, and this is a small step in the right direction, I think, so, um, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And, and the Councilman Strong?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna have much to say other than what I said before. I do think we've tackled some real tough issues these last couple meetings, so I appreciate everybody's conversation and, and being respectful. And I think that it's been, you know, positive to work through these things, and I know that, uh, this is a tough time that none of us anticipated to be like this scenario, so, um, as we continue to navigate these issues, I think, uh, to continue to do it this way will, will be good for all of us, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilman Burns, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think I've said what I really wanted to say earlier. Uh, however, you know, this, uh, this resolution that we passed, um, it is a non-binding resolution. I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, you know, the, the non-binding resolution doesn't really do anything. Well, yes, but I'm looking forward to being a part of a council that we are gonna do some, some real things to, uh, to help people to, to, to weed out racism wherever we see it. to weed out racism wherever we see it in our city. You know, has to do with the, you know, and we need a police force that, that looks, the breakdown of the police force is the same racially as it is as our community is, we need that. We need City Hall to look that way, we need, so I'm looking forward to really moving the city in that direction, and that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, and the Councilwoman Riley, please.
Thank you, Council President, fellow colleagues, again, I think we've said a lot during this meeting, and I'm glad to say that we sound pretty much the same and are celebrating the passing of this resolution. Yes, it is a non-binding resolution, but I do want you guys own it as our position statement. And a position statement kind of defines how we will, again, look at resolutions, look at legislation on behalf of our constituents. So no, there is nothing in there that binds us, but it does define us, so I think that is great. I also want to give kudos to our, our neighbors and friends, our constituents. The advocacy that we've heard and felt this week, I know I wasn't alone, we've gotten, I know I've gotten at least ten calls today about some of the legislation, they are looking at the website, they are pulling legislation, and they want to walk through this with us, and I celebrate that. I like when residents bring data, because it causes us to reassess or reevaluate areas we may not have considered initially. So I'm thankful for that, and I thank everyone that called in today, I thank everyone that emailed and called us as well. I do want to say that we did talk about, just because this was brought up earlier, we have, we have indebted ourselves a little bit over 47 million, which is 66% of our debt limit. Our debt limit is 102.7 million. So as we continue to approve and review bond ordinances, we have to be mindful of how closely we move towards that limit. So I thank you for someone bringing up that information this evening, it's very important. So I will close my comment tonight with reminding all that we count. The census is critical to the entire city, to the entire county. If you have not completed your census, please email, call one of us, we can give you the phone number and/or the website. We thank you again, and have a great evening.
All right, I'm going to make a couple of comments here, first of all, Councilman Riley, is 66% of our bond limit is that good? Where we are, is that bad?
I would say we would need to call Chuck Shager and have him kind of review that with us.
Point it out, though, I mean, you must say it's a bad thing, right, I don't know, are we ever-
I don't know, it was, it was questioned earlier, and someone did say they used to be at 80%, I think that was the comment that was made, but again, I can't tell you that. So I'm just telling you what we know to be true, so that-
I can tell you this, I believe the previous administration had it up as high as 80 and almost 90%, I believe, so, we're nowhere near that, and I'll move on.
If we want to kind of assess, but I was just giving the data.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Let me start with the, so with the, the way the RL came down here from Councilwoman Freeman, I think if we, if it shows what, and when we, then we, so let's do our own, and then we work together to get one done, and I think that's a good thing. I think we were put, I felt I was put in a position as a council person where, here's my RL, and you have a couple days to agree to it, and then if you don't agree to it, then what's, what's wrong? So I'm, it came, it worked out in the end, I'm glad it worked out like it did, and I think in the future, we can work together and be better as a council, but I think we need to, it kind of said, I don't want to see an RL that have nothing, and no say in, I'm not going to sign off on one of those, because why would I? And so moving forward, I hope we can continue to work together, I think we're better as a council if we work together. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.
Good night, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.